The land we're meeting on today and respect the spiritual relationship with their country. We recognise the many generations of stewardship the Crowners people have provided to this land and respect that their cultural heritage and beliefs are as important today as they were for their ancestors. There are no apologies unless councillor Menke doesn't turn up. Um, is there any leave of absence? We know we have one from councillor, um, Joshi that we've already approved. Are there any others? Oh, and councillor Furlan. Um, are there any other leave of absence that's coming up? No? Fine, we move on to three. Reports requiring decision of council. Three point one, the draft annual business plan and budget twenty 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 two to twenty twenty three. Now it was in your papers. Are there any further questions regarding the annual business plan?
I have.
Yes, councillor.
Three, four questions actually. Um, on page twenty two, which says that we pay our rates on the twelfth of the month. I'm just curious because I pay a lot of rates and every other council is, well, everyone that I pay is on the first of the month. I'm just curious as to why we're mid-month. My second question is off from page twenty eight. Why is there a difference in the regional landscape levy? As a collector, should not be in equal the out, and it doesn't. And from page thirty two, how do we value our assets? Should I know that? And is it out of my head? But I'd just like to be reminded. And then on page thirty eight, I've got no idea what that graph is about. And if I don't know, then perhaps there might be other people who can't follow it.
I have a second question.
What page? Page thirty eight, there's something missing. If I can't understand it and think, what is that about? Well, then other people are going to think the same way. So there are my four questions.
Uh, through your worship, um, I believe historically the, we've charged our rates on the twelfth of, uh, of those months. And it was a, whether that was a decision of council in the past or not, I'm, I'm unaware. I can take that question on notice and, and report back if needs be. Um, but it's been that way since I've been here and, um, the dates have been assigned for instance.
Um, Charles Sturt, Adelaide, Burnside. And whatever council is, I think Plaig, no, that's up north, Onkaperenga are all the first of the month.
Did you have any?
Uh, through your worship, I did talk to our, um, rates officer about this. And she said it was just to give us enough time to have it all through the printer and for, um, any debt collection that we need to follow up as well, combined to putting on the next, um, reminder notice. And it's always been around mid-month, so we kept it as it's.
This, and then the next one, why is the original landscape levy not the same going in and going out?
So through your worship, um, the amount that we collect from rate payers differs to the amount that we pay because there's a very small administration fee that we need to pay to, um, the Green Adelaide Board, which we, uh, sorry, that are a board that we do not collect from rate payers.
Oh, okay. So that's what council is paying.
Correct.
And the next one was, how do we value our assets?
I might defer that long, so.
What was it? Sorry. How do we defer, how do we value our assets?
Our assets. So on page thirty two, all our assets, our infrastructure is all got a value. How do we go about that? And is it from year after year? Do we just add the CPI? Or do we get the, um, quantity surveyors back in to revalue? What do we do?
Uh, through your worship.
Sorry, I should know this, but I don't.
That's okay. So annually we'll go through and do a revaluation of a certain portion of the assets. So last year we did open space assets. Um, next year we're going to do roads, curves and footpaths subject to the condition order. So every year they go and done a revalue, looking at market rates from around the country to get a true value of what they are. That's then combined. So within five years, all of our assets will be revalued, um, to be up to current standards.
Thank you. And my last question was, what happened on page thirty eight?
Uh, through your worship, myself and the manager of, uh, marketing and communications are aware of this. So it happened in last year's annual business plan. And for this year, when it's put online, it actually comes up as two pages. So the graph will join with the first page, but just for this report, it's put above it.
Yeah, right. Through, through the chair. So when we're doing the draft documents, that's how it's presented. Um, and then when we have the final one presented to us, the PDF is actually presented as two pages. So when it's, the final one's uploaded, it will appear as a double page spread as if you were reading it.
Thank you.
It actually looks there as if it should be landscape instead of portrait or something like that.
Yeah, when the file comes out, it flips open and the two align.
Oh yeah, we get both pages sent to us.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
Because that's, that income's important.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Um, oh, oh, two. One is ear award of the two hundred thousand dollar contribution. Is that stated somewhere in the?
Yeah, through your worship, that's an equity contribution. You'll see that on the balance sheet as two hundred thousand.
And the second one is, there's reference on page seven about us going out to consultation to increase the debt ceiling. And it should be noted as part of the annual business plan, public consultation process, councillor seeking the community feedback. Are we making a comment in the annual business plan that, that we're planning to do that or was it just in this report?
Did you want to answer that? Uh, through you, what should we, um, we, we, I think the rationale behind not including it in the business plan is because we didn't want to confuse the situation between a potential increase up to twelve point five million or whatever the number might be in a future year as opposed to this particular business plan. So the question will be asked as part of the consultation process, but get separately to the document. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the, through the chair, the plan is that instead of going up for a separate consultation, we figured we'd do it together. However, for the consultation material, it's worded, so everything, the top part of it is all based on the twenty twenty two, twenty three financial year. And that last question, it's clearly defined at the end that for residents to keep in mind that that will not impact this financial year. It's to look at future budgets.
And we'll go out to consultation separately on that one.
It'll be in the same, the same group as this, but it'll be at, at the bottom, a bottom question on the annual business plan.
I'm just a bit confused. We asking them in this business plan.
We're asking them, yeah, through your worship, asking them as part of this consultation, but it is separate matter to the business plan itself.
And it states not for this year.
It states it will be for, potentially be for a future year, not this particular year.
So are they going to get confused reading a document like this? This is something that we're going to seek feedback on whether we should increase the debt for a future year part of this business plan or are they going to be voting on, are they going to consult on, we're going to consult on that totally separate to the business plan?
We did, we did discuss whether they do it separately, but we think the best way to do it is have our survey questions listed and have that one on the end because it's all at the end of the day related, related to budgets. But we have labelled clearly at the bottom of it that that question will not impact this financial year.
It'll, it'll impact the next one.
It may.
So keeping in mind that, that it is, it is a preliminary question and.
Okay, so it's not a final.
No, okay.
Absolutely. I'm just thinking they're going to not see the forest from the trees.
Yeah, it's to see.
Cause I've got an appetite.
So I believe the question off the top of my head is, would you support an increase? Um, have you got the question there?
I can, yeah.
But again, it will be cons- consulted as part of the following year's one as far as that AVP if we go out, if there is determined to, to raise it.
So the exact question is worded, following a long-term operational review of council's future projects and budget. As part of the twenty twenty three, twenty four annual business plan, council is looking to raise the debt ceiling from nine point five million to twelve million. This would enable council the extra funding to undertake strategic projects as they arise. Please note that this will not impact the budget or rates for the twenty twenty two, twenty three financial year. Would you be supportive of this? And there'd be yes, no, unsure. And then that just gives us a preliminary idea on whether people would be supportive, wouldn't, and then.
One up and running to the, like, a bit of, bit of a touchy feeling, appetite. Okay, good.
Councillor Menke.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, just on the same question, um, is it this sort of, um, through, um, like electronic survey?
Yeah.
So could we put a link to that question and maybe have a, a fact sheet about how, well, when our last, um, review was? When it was set and what sort of, uh, um, considerations go into, um, raising, uh, the debt ceiling? Um, and I think a lot of people, you know, if they really want to vote on this or have a, um, put a yes or no, they should really have a bit of an understanding of the background and what it actually means going forward. I mean, you could even put some risks in there as well or some opportunities and risks just so they can actually start balancing it out, informing the community a bit more about, you know, what it all means.
Uh, through your worship, absolutely, councillor. And we can definitely put together.
Yeah, it has been on for a while, correct? And, you know, like growth, I mean, our expected, expected growth in the, in the, um.
So last, last time the ceiling was raised was as a result of the bill for this building, which is close to eight or nine years ago, I believe it was. So. Absolutely, we can.
Just to try and show that we can, in fact, align with the growth we're expecting and everything else. So, yep, thanks.
Yes, councillor.
Uh, once again, along, um, similar lines, one is if we can get a copy of those questions that will be going out as well just so, um, um, elected members can see those as, as well. But I've long thought that, um, tying our debt ceiling should be related to, um, um, probably our operating income and also operating, and I've mentioned it previously, um, because, correct me if I'm drawing wiki with the, uh, net financial liability ratio being zero to a hundred and that percentage is based on, on the, um, um, on the, um, total operating income. Um, does that ratio not tell us then of our operating income for, um, for next year is meant to be around about eleven million? That we can, that ratio is telling us we can line up to a hundred and twenty percent of eleven million, which therefore is around about thirteen. I'm not suggesting that we do thirteen by any stroke of the imagination. But what, what I am suggesting is there may be some, somewhere part way, but if we implant within our guiding principles and I'm, and I'm happy for you to say otherwise, but if we implant within our guiding principles that we can, um, have a, a debt ceiling of up to, um, a hundred percent of our total operating income for a, for a twelve month period, which is less than what the audit committee has recommended and what council has adopted at a hundred and twenty percent. That puts us close to the twelve million that we're talking about. However, if we implant that, we can then continue each year without having to go back out. Each time our total operating income increases, so it's, it's gone to eleven million or something. It'll probably go up by, you know, another five percent on top of that next year. You're constantly increasing your, your ability to do that without having to go back out. So perhaps a comment or, or opinion on that.
I, I suggested CPI.
Yeah, through your worship, um, our target ratio is between zero being no debt and a hundred and twenty percent, a hundred and twenty percent of debt of our operating income, um, for this year has deteriorated a bit to eighty seven percent. Um, in saying that, in going to a hundred and twenty percent, we still need to factor in whether the LGFA would be on board with us exceeding a hundred percent. We have had very initial discussions with them and they want reasons why we would be exceeding a hundred. So we certainly, you know, can look at it and entertain it, but there's also that aspect as well as to whether the lenders will look at it and go, yes, we would delay.
Fair enough. I, I actually agree. I'd be inclined to pull that ratio back. And I know over a period of time we haven't, but the, the mayor just made a suggestion that it could also help if it's, um, CPI on top of this, on top of the starting point. Um, because then you don't run up, um, run up against the same issue. It's something that's been accepted. It doesn't look quite as big a jump as nine and a half to twelve million does because it goes up incrementally. Yeah, incrementally. Um, so that it's not really, um, it then doesn't become something that could, um, possibly, um, alarm the, uh, alarm the community. So that's, that, they're just my thoughts around that. And I just think there's a better way to go about it rather than saying jumping from nine and a half to twelve. Although some of councillor Menke's comments around putting some historical information in there too. Like saying that, you know, debt ceiling's been like this for, for eight years, ten years, whatever length of time is, gives a bit of explanation and clarity for people around, um, around what their answer might be when they're filling in, filling out questionnaire.
Okay, yes, councillor.
Um, I agree with the councillor Menke's suggestion of having some explanations in there because I think the obvious answer to that question would be no. And I think without decent explanations and reasons for why they can do it would, uh, And I think without decent explanations and reasons for why they can do it would, uh, um.
Hmm, no, very sound suggestion.
I, I don't think that, uh, just asking this, that very bland question basically, do you think it's a good idea? Um, you get the feeling that, you know, what are council spending that on and miss that in the other? Why can't they pull their head in for a while? So, and, uh, in relation to setting the debt ceiling, I don't know whether we should be preempting what a future council might want to do with that debt ceiling. Uh, um, I think, I raised the issue earlier, I know, but I am considering it, um.
We did it, we did it the last time, because we did it when we reviewed the financial guiding principle.
Anyway.
Okay, yeah, again, counsel Ashby, this is just a preliminary testing of order and gauging some initial feedback. It will be for the incoming council to make the final determination on it.
Any further questions? If not, would someone move the motion that's up on the?
Sorry, ma'am, Bricky, I've got my hand up online, but.
Yes. So, my apologies, you're really at my peripheral viewing there, but go, please go ahead.
Um, I, I've never really understood why, why an actual li- uh, liabilities ratio is set quite at twenty percent when we've got a debt ceiling which is well within that. Um, it just doesn't make sense and, and Vicky, I'm, I'm surprised that the LGFA are the ones saying, oh, what are you gonna do with that money considering I'm pretty certain that a hundred and twenty percent aligns with their guiding principles as well? Um, from memory. So, yeah, I think like counsel Williams, I don't understand why we have a debt ceiling as well as a, a, uh, financial indicator, um, set that's something different. So I would be inclined to try and a lot, and then some way, um, so we don't have a fixed debt ceiling, um, but it was fixed against, um, that ratio.
Through you worship, that makes, thank, thank you, counsel, Wil- and Wilkins will, um, take that upon notice and we'll review it.
Thank you, counsel Wilkins. Any other question or comment? And then put the motion.
Thank you, ma'am. It's ju- just that given the conversation around that, that's come up from three or four different, um, elected members, whether or not we want this motion to go through as it's, as it's listed there, or whether there's a variation that, that we wanna put to that. Um, a- and, and once again, the commentary around, um, um, uh, decision for, uh, counsel actually just made around a decision for a future council. Um, just why we need, why we need to have that question specifically around that at the moment when it's not nec- when it's not necessarily required at the moment, um.
Well, it depends what happens with the over.
Well, that's, that's right.
So that's why it's just giving, we don't have, we don't have to borrow all that money, but it's giving us the opportunity if we do.
Well, that's right, but, but I'm still thinking about, about making it not, once again, not really linked specifically to a total, but linked more to, because as counsel Wilkins just mentioned, the, the, they don't marry up. The, the ratios and, and the debt that we're talking about don't marry up. So we've got different rules within our, um, principles and within our ratios that are telling us, giving us different answers depending on how you wanna read them or apply them. So that, that's, I guess, the difficulty. I mean, it probably doesn't matter that much, but this has been something I've, I've probably spoken about for a number of years. Um, um, and so of course, the only way you, you can talk about it all you like, unless you put it in a motion, it doesn't really matter, does it? So.
You, you worship, but counsel Wi- Williams, uh, uh, again, as I said, it's a preliminary questioning and obviously any sort of further thought to this would have to go through, o- obviously go through discussions with audit, um, as to what the best way forward would be, as well as the, um, the scheme as well to, to see what exactly we could borrow. So wh- while it is up to council's determination to include something in the resolution if they want, I, I personally think it's probably a little bit premature at this moment because the community may come back with a, um, overwhelming opposition to it, and which means it would effectively be dead in the water anyway. So I think the finite details of how that would pan out would be done so at a later stage with council order and the incoming council as well.
Well, see, that's the thing with saying the questioning beforehand as well, because if we see the questions prior to that, maybe rather than saying increasing from nine and a half to twelve, is whether the, um, whether the community would support, um, an increase in, in the debt ceiling for, because as one of our guiding principles also says, around, um, that we will only borrow for capital works, um, whether they would, um, um, uh, you know, be happy with council, um, borrowing further if it were for capital works only aligned with our guiding principles. So you don't necessarily have to put a specific amount on it, but. It ma- it may not matter one way or the other, but I think it's something we need to tidy up.
I'm happy to move the motion as it stands. It's a recommendation I'd like to take on board everything that counsel Williams is talking about, but I think it's a discussion for another, another day, in actual fact, um.
Hmm, too.
And address it specifically at the future date.
Thank you, counsel Ashby. Second up?
One second.
Thank you, counsel Coleman. Does anyone wish to speak? Do you wish to speak to the motion?
No.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak for the motion? If not, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. Against? Carried. Okay, Eastwaste Draft Annual Business Plan Budget, twenty twenty two, twenty three. It has been circulated to all councils. It also has been reviewed by audit and they were happy with it. Does anyone have any questions regarding it? Mayor, I have just one. Yes, counsel. Um, there's a comment on page forty five and it's regarding fuel, if it hits two dollars seventy. Um, have we done the arithmetic as to how much that's going to impact us if it hits two dollars seventy? Because they've said they'll come back to the councils asking for more money.
Through you worship, no, I haven't done any work around that, but I can certainly take it on notice and put some figures together.
I'd just be interested. Luckily, we're a small council. Yes.
Hmm.
Well, there are some positives out there. Yes, counsel Williams?
Um, thank you, ma'am.
Way to slide it.
Um, that's actually a very good question by, um, councillor Bishop because, uh, that, and actually maybe just think of something else in, when you look at the fuel costs and any of those costs rising, um, a possible way of either mitigating or saving some money on top of that is, um, not picking up as frequently. So in with those, with some of that breakdown of the year, give us whether we were able to get any comparisons around, um, fortnightly as opposed to weekly general waste pickups and what possible implications flow on for fees. Because I know that's been, um, spoken about previously.
The only way, the only way you would ever get a blue bin not collected weekly would be because the green bin is.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be any less pickups, um, but there'll be a very brave government that brings that in.
Maybe, but obviously the cost of picking up the blue bin and getting rid of that waste as opposed to the cost of the green. There's a difference between the cost and disposing of each of those bins.
They go out to different, whatever they don't.
So, um, I can't remember the numbers exactly, bin, or, or I think the general waste was something like, was it seventy bucks or something as opposed to like twenty odd, because of course you get income from the green, from the green waste. So, you know, that, um, a- and aside from that, that would certainly educate people more quickly, but it puts their rubbish, wouldn't it?
But we don't have our green bin picked up by Eastwaste, they're done by, well, it's picked up by Eastwaste for another company.
Yeah, that's right, and it's just interesting to include all of those things in the comparisons.
Um, are we looking at the cost of the fuel? Any other questions? You two, no?
I've got one from left wing. The, in the notes, so they were talking about, uh, tagging the bins down the, down the line somewhere. And I thought that's a good idea to measure each individual's waste going out. But is it a precursor to, uh, to, uh, individually billing the houses? Once you've got that, you know the waste, you could actually bill them on that. It's only the next step because it's all computerized.
They've been talking about tagging rubbish bins for, uh, about six years, haven't they? About six years? They brought it in, it was gonna cost millions the time that they suggested it. And this council went, oh, we're not doing that, we can't afford to do that. Some councils are tagged, their bins are tagged. Um, it's so that if you see they're putting in the wrong things, you can advise them not to put in X, Y, Z in the green bin when it should be in the yellow bin or blue bin. And it keeps a track of the bins.
Hmm, okay.
Because bins do get stolen. I, I was interested to read that they are challenged by the multi-dwelling, um, houses and that it's not just a problem here, which the mayor and I had heard about when we went out to Eastwaste, but they're going to look interstate and overseas to see how they deal with the multi-dwelling place.
Also, um, the tagging was also to avoid picking up illegal bins. Because there's lots of people putting bins out that shouldn't be, shouldn't be put out and they're not entitled to, not taxed or properly.
Yep. Any further questions? If not, would someone move the motion? You're moving the motion, councillor Fair? Yes, second up, councillor Williams. All those in favour then? Thank you, carried. We now move on to. Sorry, I can't separate my bits of paper. Year of water draft budget, it has also gotten re-catalization proposed. And this is also been through, um, audit, um. And then approved this, this recommendation. There's a lot of discussion by audit. Yes, counsel, this is, I went through this and I'm on that board. And I cannot see where the chair's salary is. Can you point that out to me? Do you know? I looked at the income, so a hundred or thereabouts is for the general manager and a hundred and, and the, then there's the engineer that runs the whole business, Mark. Where's Jeff Tate's fee? Am I missing it again?
Counselor Bishop?
It's on the governance, I believe, uh, if you look at table three on page seventy four.
Yeah.
It's governance seventeen thousand chairman plus provision.
I missed it.
For all the committee members.
General manager. So why would his, why would he not be in under, um, employee costs? Just because he's, he's, it's a board fee, that's not.
It's a sitting fee or?
Yeah, it's a sitting, and they've also allowed for two independents, if needed.
So not an employee as such?
We don't have any independents.
No, but they're saying for the, and plus provision, the two inde- independent audit, oh, sorry, independent audit. So they'd have to pay for those, the independents, audit members.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councillor Fair?
Probably more of a comment. This is getting into the scary part now of year award. Because we're just gonna be feeding cash in to manage their operations and they'll be back, this is my opinion only, they'll be back for another handout before, before the next financial year, unless there's a game changing approach that, that comes about.
We're fortunate, there is a game changing approach. Let's just hope it gets actioned and rolls along faster than we're worried it won't, hmm.
Uh, the one interesting thing, I think we're paying per kiloliter, uh, less than what they say water charge, so I think that's, is that right? Thirty-three thousand for twenty-eight thousand kiloliter?
We are paying actually more.
Is it more?
Yes.
Okay, well then I got that one wrong as well.
Um, but the people who are not the councils are paying, are paying less.
Okay.
And the reason that the councils are paying more is that that is as part of our, again, our security. So that when we hit the next drought, which we will, and you'll see that we've got water in the bank, which is fabulous, four hundred and fifty megaliters, um, we should be okay. And a new chair and a new general manager are really good.
No, I have no doubt, I have no doubt they're capable and I've seen them speak and, but it's what they've got to work with, I think it is with what they've got. And, uh, but this goes back many years ago, I think, in terms of the decision to make.
It's what we've got, who we've got to work with.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Any other questions?
Just once again on councillor Bishop's, um, comment, so, um, in a drought, we're talking about the water we've got banked there. I'm assuming that during a drought, when you need the water, that the water that goes into the aquifer is less. So therefore you have less water because there's a drain and everything due to a drought, or is there water injection?
No, what we are storing, we're, we're putting in a lot more than we're pumping out. So we have a plus four hundred and fifty. Capacity. Megaliters in there waiting to be used. We have a lot of water to be sold if we could, if we can get the clients. You know, for ages and ages, it was, oh, we don't have any water to sell. Well, we do, we've got a lot and. It's the infrastructure that's limiting the sales. Correct. But there, with the water, what's it called, the, the fact we can sell through the aquifer?
Trade, you're right.
There is possibility that we may be able to look at trading of water. And if that's the case, then yes, we'll start to see this turnaround. And that means we're putting it in, but maybe Onka Puringa is taking it out, for example. And we then for, therefore don't need the pipelines because it's all in this underground dam. I don't know how it works, counsel Menke, but I've been told it's quite, quite. How it can happen.
Ma'am, Bricky, can I ask a question?
May.
Um, my understanding was that we were granted access to take water from the torrents. I don't see any cost associated with that, um, is the first question. And the second one was just around, uh, they look like they're on an additional expansion of the scheme. Um, with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for professional services. Do we know what kind of payback we're expecting to get from that extension?
I can't answer that one. Okay, um, oh, gone brain dead on the first, what was the first one? Uh, councillor Wilkins?
Just about, uh, the taking the water from the torrents?
Oh, yes. We did the due diligence on it and it didn't stack up. It, um, we could only take the water when this torrents was flowing really heavily, really fast. And we were already taking water and we were at capacity. So the, when, and I've forgotten the exact flow, it's something like when it was six hundred and fifty something or others. And we could only, um, uh, take it in at four fifty. And it's the restrictions of our infrastructure, so we couldn't, uh, take, take that water, basically. So we chose not to go ahead, but we put it on the back burner to say we may come back later when we have the infrastructure. Our issue is that we cannot clean it fast enough because of the, uh, filters. And the second question is, oh God, I should have had dinner. What was your second question?
Just around the, uh, the provision, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for professional services, which is design work in relation to expansion opportunities.
Okay, um, the mayor has already mentioned the fact that the reason that we cannot sell the water, the system is at full capacity now and we have, we need to get a full link in so that we can fill and, um, take at the same time. So we've got a one-way piping system that goes into Burnside and Burnside can take a lot, lot more water, um, which is to the benefit of, of all of us. And we've, they've partially done this, what's called the Lindy Loop. Norwood Park and St Peters have done, done it. And so they're going to be able to water the St Peters in opposite the avenues, there's a big grassed area there. And that's going to be taking more water there to water that. But the problem is it will only be to a certain point because it's to service Norwood Park and St Peters, not for Burnside. But at the moment is they pump up to fill the tanks.
But at the moment is they pump up to fill the tanks at Burnside. They have to stop the pumping up when they pull it out to water it. So there is, because of the amount of parks and green areas, they need watering, Burnside does. They haven't got enough tank and they never would have enough tank. So what they want to do is pump up and take out, but that means a whole new lot of pipes. And that is an expensive exercise. They've done it to a point with the Lindy Loop, but it hasn't been finished. Oh, he's gone. Any further questions? No? If not, would someone then be happy to move the motion? Thank you, councillor Bishop. May I have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Joshi. Do either of you, do you wish to speak to the motion? Do you wish to, does anyone wish to speak to the motion? If not, I will put the motion. All those in favour? Against? No. Carried. Thank you.
Reluctantly.
What was that?
I said reluctantly.
I was very worriedly.
Worriedly, yes.
And we move on to the Highbury Landfill.
Don't hold him against.
The Highbury Landfill Authority Draft Budget twenty, twenty twenty two, twenty two, twenty three. Any problems with that date at the minute?
I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Thank you very much, councillor Williams. Second is councillor Fern. All those in favour then? All those in favour? Thank you. Carried. We now move to four, which is confidential reports. We now have an item relating to the, to an Eastwaste proposal and charter review, which Eastwaste has requested to be in confidence. So could we now please have a mo, move, sorry. Could we please now have a vote to move into confidence? Councillor Coleman, seconda councillor Bishop, all those in favour? Thank you. Carried. Thank you. 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 Good to go? Thank you. Well, we've now moved out of confidence and at seven forty-six. And we're now declared the meeting closed at seven forty-seven and thank you very much for anyone attending.
Thank you.